Okay, good evening and welcome to the December meeting of the Town of Milton Planning Board. Ms. Blanchard, would you please roll call the board for attendance?
Mr. Marsupano?
Here.
Ms. Pedula?
She's here. Nancy, if you could just say you're here. Oh, I'm muted. Nancy, if you could just say you're here. I gotta mute myself.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Mandesa?
Here.
Ms. Stevens? Here. Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Chairman Barto?
Here.
Okay, we'll try that. Nancy, can you hear me now? This way? Okay, great. So I'd also want to note for the record that in attendance, Nancy Pedula is zooming in as well as our engineer Joel Bianchi. We have Bill Lewis, the Director of Planning and Codes, Deputy Clerk Amanda Zawada, and Tina Blanchard, our Planning Board Secretary. We'll start out with a pledge to the flag.
My pledge to allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under our own laws.
So for this evening, we're continuing our kind of hybrid arrangement of people both zooming in and or phoning in as well as being here in person. I really want to thank the staff and the board and every applicant for some cooperation as we work our way through. This is still kind of complicated. I do believe we have a couple of panelists that are presenting projects that will also be on via Zoom, so we'll make sure we try to get them somehow mic'd in as we go forward. I just wanted to recognize that this is our last meeting of 2020. Hopefully, as we go into 2021, things improve, although there has been some discussion. A couple of municipalities in the county have had to close their town offices. I talked to Supervisor Zlatnik earlier this week, and he said there's a chance that at least for January, they may close the offices and we have to conduct our meetings all via Zoom. So please stay in touch with us. We'll stay in touch with you the best we can, and if that's going to happen as we go, we will continue to do business, but it just may all become virtual for a short period in 2021. But vaccines are rolling out, and hopefully we get to back to some normalcy. I also want to note that Nancy Pedula was appointed by the Town Board to be a full member of the planning board at their last meeting. She'll take, fill out the term of Marco Bianco, who had resigned due to his business commitments and responsibilities. So we're welcoming Nancy onboard, and I'm sure the Town Board will authorize us to start looking for an alternate at some time in the near future. So we'll be doing that. If anybody's interested, reach out to the supervisor, myself, anybody. We'll see what we can do about getting that position filled. I'm sorry, what? Okay, it's already went out. Excellent. We have a couple opportunities for the public to interface with us this evening, and I'd ask that you, if you're zooming with us and you want to make a public comment, please use the hand wave feature and alert us as to your interest in commenting. You may also use the Q and A feature that's on the screen and submit a question. However, we will not accept anonymous questions. Please submit your name and computer number. If you've dialed in on the phone feature for Zoom and would like to make a comment, please call the office number here, (518) 884-2764, or text Bill Lewis at (518) 376-1831 and provide him your name and interest in making a comment. He'll alert us on a measure you can get off and address it. As with our usual comment protocol, we request that you announce yourself, state your address, and then present your comments in three minutes or less. On December 11th, I emailed Supervisors Lotnick and Councilwoman Carr regarding pending appointments to the Planning Board for alternate member and the expiration of term for John Whittle, and the supervisor called me, and they're working on those, so hopefully those will all start happening in the near future. I also recommended that the town consider the possibility of waiving some of our training requirements for 2021. There is some virtual training out there, but it's kind of in odd times during the day, so people have already had publics connecting with those opportunities. So I think we'll continue to have discussions. I know you're all very diligent in getting in service training, but without the county doing its conference this year, it kind of impedes everybody getting it done in their own first route. So I know that Meg Shodens also for the ZDA expressing just wanting to get some direction as to what we may or may not do for that. And then I just think, hopefully everybody has a very nice holiday season, end of the year, and we get started again in January of 2021. That concludes my comments for this evening. Any other board members have any comments? If not, our first act of business, everyone should have the minutes from the October 21st Planning Board meeting. We're going to do two-minute approvals, but we're going to do them separately. So I will entertain a motion to approve the October 21st 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, comments, changes to the minutes? There being none, Tina, pull the board.
Mr. Marsupano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Nancy, did you say yes? Her thumbs up.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Ms. Mandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes.
Okay, that approved. We also should all have the minutes from our special meeting on October 30th. I will entertain a motion to approve the October 30th 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I solemnly approve the meeting minutes from our October 30th 2020 special planning board meeting.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Marsupano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Nancy, yes. Yes, you said yes.
Mr. Collins?
I understand I was not present.
Ms. Mandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that excellent minutes. Next is general open public comment. At this point, we'll open the meeting with comments from the public. Again, I'd ask if you're zooming, raise your hand, use the Q and A question and answer button, or give a call to the office at (518) 884-2764, or Bill Lewis's text, (518) 376-1831. Is there any comment from the public? I'm not seeing anything on Zoom. Okay, there being no public comments, we'll close the public comment period. All right, well, next move to the site plan review and special use permit application for the Ronald Street LLC, 352 Ronald Street. This evening, we'll start our first review of the proposed site plan and possible special use permit for a commercial retail project at 352 Ronald Street. The project is for a closed Napa retail store and accessory retail outlet operation on the same premise. I also know that Bill Lewis and I met with Mr. Munter and Jeff Shore on this project on November 20th, and I met with them again on December 4th. This project builds off an original proposal for a strip mall on the same site that was approved by this board in 2016. The project was filed by Mr. File at that time, but never started, and this represents a change and contingency on the sale of property going forward. Everybody should have before them the following materials: a site plan review application dated 12/2/20, a special use permit application dated 12/2/20, a preliminary concept plan dated November 2020, a sketch plan map dated 12/1/20, a layout plan map dated 12/1/20, a proposed floor plan dated 11/30/20, proposed elevation plan dated 12/2/20, revised site plan checklist that I shared with Mr. Munter and Jeff Shore following our 12th floor meeting to summarize what I felt was necessary for site plan review, a short environmental assessment form part one undated but received on December 4th, a site plan dated November 30th 2016, a site plan application, and short environmental assessment form dated December 29th 2015, a stormwater pollution prevention plan dated December 30th 2015, and MJ Engineering Review Number One on this project and a letter dated December 16th 2020. Regarding the State Department of Housing Review Act for this application, again, the applicant has provided us an SEI F Part One. The project's an unlisted action. I would entertain a motion for the Milton Planning Board to serve as lead agency for this proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I solemnly...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the lead agency status? There being none, Tina, can you pull the board?
Mr. Marsupano?
Yes.
Ms. Pedula?
Nancy said yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Ms. Mandesa?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Chairman Barto?
Yes.
Okay, given some outstanding information that we still need for this project, we're not able to complete the determination of significance, so we'll look to do that in January or the next time the application's before us. So with that, Mr. Shore and Mr. Hunter, do you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the board for considering our project. My name is, am I speaking loud enough?
Yeah.
My name is Jeff Shore. My, with Ron and I, we own the Napa Auto Park Store that is currently in Boston Spa. We're also the owners of the Napa Auto Park Store in Saratoga, as well as a store in Queensberry. For those of you who don't know, the bulk of the Napa Auto Park Stores in the country are independently owned by local owners like ourselves. What we are proposing to do is we surveyed some sites in the area, and we've located a location at 352 Ronald Street, which we believe would be a great home, permanent homes. Here's the, let me correct the area numbers. At 352 Ronald Street, we've identified as the property, we would like to move our Napa Auto Park Store from the Town of Boston into the Town of Milton. We believe it would be a good permanent home for us to build a location that we can have for many years. We believe it would be a good fit for the community. Our business services a lot of the independent repair shops, as well as the Town of Milton themselves, repair shop there, many other farms, fleets in the area. You know, we feel like we'd be a good part of the community, and we want to make the proposal tonight. To help us do that, we've hired the services of Munter Enterprises, a well-known and respected builder in the area, along with John Payton, who's an architect, and a couple of different surveyors. So at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mike, let him kind of really explain all the nuts and bolts of our project.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mike Munter, and I'm here representing Jeff Shore and Napa. And we're really here to seek reapproval, if you will, on an amended site plan. This board had approved this site previously in 2016 for $11,000, and I have that shown right now, just as a reminder, and some of you might not have been on the board at the time, of what the project looked like at the time. It was basically 11,600 square foot retail facility with potential for nine different tenants.
Can you hear me if I walk away, or do I have to?
Ah, the public can't hear you. So I'll keep taking the mic with you.
If you're looking for gift ideas, a wireless mic would be good. Anyway, so I just wanted to show you what the original plan looked like, because in order to kind of keep this simple, we wanted to stay in tune with the original site, concept, and design. So with that, we had to make adjustments basically to fit the needs of what Mr. Shore's building use and layout would be. So we have the same site layout and generally the same traffic and parking strategy. The building used to be over here on the north side of the property, and we moved it more central to the property because we felt that we needed traffic flow around the building. He does get deliveries from 18-wheelers, and he does have, he's got 12 to 15 employees, and about eight to 10 service or carrier vehicles that you see, you know, delivering parts to different garages and customers. So we understand with the Town Center guidelines and things in line to be close to the street. We did our best with that. There is a large utility easement, if you recall, across the front, so we, no one can really build out to the street and around in this sector because national grid's permanent easement there. There's some high-tension lines and gas many and things out there. So that pushes everybody automatically back from Ronald Street. And if you can see what we did here, we kept the buildings in line really with the other ones on the streetscape, just so you have a feel that everything's, I guess, you know, alike to the neighbors, if you will. So at the end of the day, we, he was a previously approved, the total area of 133,150 square feet. We made the building a little bigger, and we were able to make the impervious blacktop and areas smaller. So at the end of the day, we're not disturbing really any more area than we were in the first place. So that's where we envisioned this as more of an amendment. We kind of took the same use of the building. We're still requesting a retail, general business use, but shifted it so it would be more in line with his needs and the way the property could work for what, what his operation is. So at the end of the day, we've got, you know, previously approved, we had 45,860 square feet of blacktop. Right now, we've only got 45,250. The building was 11,700 square feet, now it's 15,500 square feet. And we even show some bank parking at this time, which we don't feel we need to build with his employee count and what he's anticipating for his customers and traffic flow. But we thought we would show that now in the event that down the road, we saw the need for that, that it shows the site can handle that area. If you'd like, I'll switch over to the, you want to go through your checklist and just talk through some of those points, or?
Sure, whatever you want.
Oh, you want to help me put it over? So we thought the picture would help explain why the building is laid out the way it is on the site. We have the customer entrance off the south side in the corner when you're coming in. The streetscape has a lot of windows where his offices and where the retail space would be. And we've got the entrance kind of tucked in the corner that would feed off the parking lot, but the building with all the windows and stuff would lend itself nicely to feel like an open type environment. And on the east end of the building, we do have like a 3,000 square foot space allocated for a tenant, and we felt, his current needs is about 12,000 square feet, but him making this kind of his home base, we felt it was wise to give him something to grow into. So in the interim, we could use that as a tenant of some sort until the time comes when he needs to grow and pick the tenant out and take over the spot, I guess. So the building, we have a variety of different materials on the building. We've got some horizontal clapboard type materials. We are considering a metallic product just to the longevity of the paint, and it's a more premium product than like using a wood. We've been doing this a lot, a lot of commercial applications. And then using some of the building reveals and different heights on the facades and the parapets to, you know, give character to the building and also shield any equipment that would be on the roof. You know, that's something that's important in this area. Think if I'm leaving anything out. But I guess in general, our intent with this new design wasn't to change the philosophy that you approved in 2016. We wanted to stay with generally the same amount of coverage and usage on the site. We're going to stick with the same landscaping criteria, lighting. We understand the streetscape with the sidewalk and having planes along the street. We're not changing really anything else that you approved in 2016, other than the way we're configuring the building and the shape of the building. That's, I guess, the simple way to look at it. We do recognize that we will have to provide some engineering just to show that we're, the stormwater engrading plan and everything, again, works on this site, but we're going to use the same engineering principles that was used then, where we feel the underground stormwater chambers with some small retention ponds and things will be more than adequate for what we have here. And we've got some screening across the back. There's a fence that was proposed previously would still be in play along the residential neighbors, and we would pay heed to that with the particular lighting to make sure we're not creating any light going off-site. And we would also stick with the same type of monument sign that would come up through the, I guess, a sign permit and go through that approval. So other than morphing the configuration a little bit, we're not asking to change what you approved in 2016. Just kind of looking for this amended approval, if you will, and go from there. We, I will comment that we did add a few things on the special use permit that we probably don't want to after, I did have a chance to read the comments from MJ Engineering.
We got a copy of this, okay.
Yep, I did. So I guess in haste, when we were going through and we had met and said, now's the time to put whatever you think you might want to do with that tenant in the future is a good time to do it. So at this time, I would like to rescind on the special use permit. I buried that one on the bottom. The gasoline and service station, that we realized the ramifications that has when it comes to stormwater and traffic flow. So we really don't want to add anything on here that's going to hinder your thoughts on the way this, this piece of property is used. That wasn't our intent. The intent on the special use permit was just to have maximum flexibility when it came time to find a tenant, but if there was one that came in that had a really, a need that wasn't on our list, we'd be happy to come back at that time for that, seek that approval.
So with that, I would, I'd suggest you might want to consider not asking for anything that you need the special permit at this point, and then you wouldn't even have to do that application.
It was my understanding that everything in the town sign needed a special use permit.
The only things you'd have to take off... Sorry, Mr. Chairman. The only things you'd have to take off would be the fast food drive-through, gasoline service station, and then everything else is free.
Okay, okay, that's perfect. Maybe we're looking at the wrong, anyways.
And self-service laundry.
Oh, the laundry?
That was the last one that they could add. Fast food, drive-through, gasoline, service station, self-service laundry.
Okay, we'll rescind those.
Now, you had talked about the possibility of a personal care, like a hairdresser or something like that, and that would be permitted. So if you put that in there, you know, it's not, doesn't require a special use.
Okay.
And then you just ignore the whole special use. You can always come back, as you can find, like, oh my gosh, I've got a great drive-through that he needs. But what we need is to know more of what that is. Is it a bank drive-through? Is it a fast food drive-through? Is it?
Right.
What kind of fast food is it going to be? Every time you get into the special permit, there's more detail.
Right, we didn't want to go there. I guess we didn't realize what can of worms that we opened. Putting those on there to try to make that flexible, so we'd be happy to leave it to what's allowed, the retail, business, general office, restaurant. And you said personal care was...
Personal care.
So that we don't have to, you know, because it would be impossible to design the site for something of that nature with a drive-through and whatnot and stormwater with a gas station. So go back to what it was approved for, and then a couple of the other ones we've already done.
The personal service.
Personal service. So with that being said, I think we gave you a good overview. I wanted to review the special uses, so we didn't get into any ideas that this traffic flow and things would be really much different than what it was approved for in 2016. Quite frankly, with only one major tenant and one small tenant, the traffic will be less than it would be with nine individual tenants, and I guess more uniform, if you will. Their business is generally open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So even any tenant, you know, would fall in that, that realm, I think, with these types of uses. And, you know, a lot of your deliveries come in at night, so the heavier trucks are actually coming in more off-hours or after their business hours, not throughout the night, but just after their general business hours. So that helps with the site and keeping that managed. The road around the building, again, was put there to help with the tractor trailers and the emergency vehicles and fire safety vehicles. With a building this size, it's a, it's a good asset to have there. If there's any questions, we can answer, but we, you know, we're...
I'm sure we'll have some. Bill, do you got anything you want to add at this point?
I do not.
And I'm going to ask Joel Bianchi, if he's still on there on Zoom. I don't know how we can do this. Get him on my mic here a little bit. Do you have any points you want to raise in your memo, Joel, or am I going to get my speaker up?
Yep. Okay. Each other on, and that's what we have to do. Yep, production package, and then clarify some of the, including the gag package, the doctor's special needs net, and what we need to propose, like, the spoken words on the online, but I think that's the response, the form of like that, like, get up, have that, and then report, and then provide to the, you know, so help providing that device for us. General, honest to the comment, will quickly resolve with a little bit of slack. On site plan, in storm waters, in the county, in the time, and if they, if they die, they have to, they have to, they have to, they have to provide that. And still, all the only things we'll have is the detail plan that requires up against, and not to do with, and, 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 and,
Right?
Yep.
In the area where your refuse is and that type of stuff, you really aren't, you really aren't dropped off yet. Because my experience with seeing your business work, I do see you have a lot of vehicles, your little Napa vehicles and whatnot that you gotta run around. Because I'm sure your, your business customers aren't running back and forth to your store, you're bringing it to them, right? So you're gonna have trucks that are hanging out there, then you're gonna have your employees that are gonna be there. And so what I wanna do is I wanna make sure there's enough parking for your employees and enough parking for your stuff and then for your customers and that you don't have them like lined up going around. Because when I look at it, I'm not sure that you do. Like, how many trucks do you have that's, that sit there?
About eight trucks.
Eight?
We have nine trucks. There are six trucks an hour.
A lot of these are small.
Yep.
Some I found that cars are tiny trucks.
But, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to offend with the one truck. I should've said, I know with four wheels that delivers parts to some other location. So that thing needs to place the park, right?
Right.
As well as your, your fifteen employees, right?
Yeah, fifteen, I mean, we have fifteen employees, but typically we don't have fifteen employees at, at one time.
Oh, I'm, yeah.
We usually have kind of a, a two shared.
Yeah. I would think you'd have, because, you know, there's gonna be somebody who's gonna clean the place, it's gonna be somebody who's working part-time, you know, things like that. But if you could just consider your parking and see whether some sort of pervious payment in the back would help you, because you're doing the payment anyway for the, for the dumpster situation, right? And you, you did it in that kind of way so that the person can probably come in and, and hit his garbage truck in there and then hit the dumpster and then drive right back out and one fell smooth, right?
Yes.
But you're, you don't have the same concerns with your employees walking across the areas where deliveries and stuff are happening, because that's, they're, they're your employees, right? But I just think that if you count your employees, you count where your trucks are, you count all the other stuff, I think you might want some degree of area in the back. But you guys might say no, right? So if you could just look at that and then give me an idea, maybe for the next time, because you got your three thousand square foot customer, right? Look at the parking regulations for each of those different possible customers and see how many parking spots that they would nominally have and see whether it works with your situation.
Yep, we, we did run those numbers.
Uh-huh.
See, that's where we came up with the fifty spots.
Right.
And that leaves twenty-five spots, even if every employee was at the store and everyone was serviced, whatever vehicles was there, that's twenty-five spots. And then on top of that, say there was a tenant that came in that happened to have a lot of traffic, there were more parking than the twenty-five remaining spots shared would allow, we could add twelve spots easily. I, I totally understand your point, looking in the back, but our general principle is not to mess with the engineering that was done already as much as we could in the thought with the placement of the ponds and everything, so we will take another glance at that to see if there's any.
Well, if you see it's gonna be, doesn't work for you, then you can say, yeah, we looked at it, it doesn't work, right? You know, that type of thing.
Yep.
But I think it's just better if your employees are all together and the other things are, your customers know where they go. Otherwise, you're gonna probably have discussions with your, with your poor tenant that's gonna say, hey, all your customers are parking around my, my building, right? So.
Yeah.
Trying to head that off before it occurs. Yeah.
Anybody else at this point? I just wanted to note, um, there's a number of signs there, so Bill can go over with you, what's the total square foot that's allowed, what you get out of the curb, what you get on the building, because you're gonna have your sign on the building and plus the tenant's sign on the building, so you're gonna get tight on the amount of square foot. And notice on that one you had two Napa signs on the building.
We did, we have one here, the hex, which maybe at the time of permit we would revisit, if possible. But each facade, there was a fifteen percent calculation with a maximum of a hundred and fifty square feet. I believe this sign now is showing at like a hundred and thirty square feet.
But does that, then, like, how that's the sign?
But then this, this tenant also gets fifteen percent of their facade, which is actually fifteen percent of this block.
Okay.
So we, we generally looked through those regulations and tried to emulate that to scale on this, just so it was a.
Just make sure, you know.
And we totally would do that when it came down to sign design and everything, to make sure square footage, and then the way we can break up that monument sign at the road, so there would be.
No, I'm good with that. Your, your, so, good. Go ahead, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
With the front, we had, in the, in the past, for the past applicant, we had quite a bit of discussion on the lupines and all that other stuff, right?
Yep.
And what they were gonna do in the front. Can you just describe what you're gonna do in the front? Because it, it was a large percentage of you review the information on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Poor guy went around, went around the ring around that one, so.
Yep, we totally understand, there's a, a looping area here, uh, there's actually a whole plan, I guess the grading plans need just one little bit, but, you know, we basically have to fence this off or we're not touching anything. You know, we've gotta be very sensitive to our grading in that area and to really set the boundary and put some protective fence up around that during construction. So the only, we gotta sneak in, we gotta cross the easement with a pretty substantial, uh, road section to protect these utilities. We are gonna add the sidewalk, the light poles and some trees out here on the road. Well, other than that, after we clear, there's really not much natural vegetation left, other than on the southern boundary, maybe skirting along this residential, we'll leave as much as possible on the residential. When it comes to the lupin, we're, we're, we're staying out of it.
And for this side over here, are you?
This, this side is where our utilities connect, we're allowed to cross, there's no, our lupin area is pretty much right on the southern half of the site. So on the northern half of the site, crossing the utility or tying into the utilities is, is where we're gonna be out there and then that'll all get restored.
So is that where your sign is gonna line up so you can see from the road?
The sign right now.
The one on the building?
Yes, the sign on the building is, uh, you can see the lupin area here, the sign on the building is down on this corner. And here, you're actually standing nearly level, the road and the floor, we're nearly level. And quite frankly, once, you're gonna be able to see over this, because there's really no trees or anything growing on that easement anyway, if anything, it's very small. They have shore pines and things, there's no large growth there anyway due to the easement and the power lines. So we're gonna have decent visibility actually from both. Thank you.
I just take note, and also when you go to put the sidewalk down, Cumberland Farms, you ever did, they hit the curb, but never get a last like fifteen, twenty feet of sidewalk that goes through your driveway. You might wanna talk to them and say, hey, we're gonna leave here.
Free coffee and sandwiches during construction?
Yeah, I don't, just, just, how are we gonna get that last fifteen feet of sidewalk?
Little, little dress shop on the corner.
Yeah.
Yes, so try to get this piece.
It was just a short stretch there. I hate to see that, but, I don't know what their plan required them to do.
Okay.
If not, um, just wanted to say, I did wanna note that the town board conducted a public hearing on this project, it's on November twelfth, it's part of the overview for the project. Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, let's get, I'm sorry, no, I'm leaving you on the other one. Oh, no, no. I'm gonna recommend we not have a public hearing in this project, uh, at this point.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know if the board feels good with that or not, I mean, this went to pretty expensive review, about a twenty-six point. Or we could easily do a public hearing next January, but, you know, since we're, I'm worried about the risk, let me take this back, worried about the risk of resuming, public's not gonna have an opportunity to be in here, so maybe we should. I think we should. In that way, so, now, will there be any notification to those neighbors? Do you know, have we done that yet?
No.
No.
So you will, they, all the neighbors within three hundred feet are getting a notification? And if you could talk to Cumberland Farms before that?
I've got that, I mean, that would be good.
Okay. So then I guess we'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for January twentieth, so next meeting, twenty twenty-one, at seven oh five P M, for the site plan review of two hours.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on the project? Did you need to know who that was, that was?
No.
Maggie John, okay. Uh, full board, too?
Mr. Marcus Cowan.
Yes.
Ms. Padula. Mr. Collins.
Yeah.
Ms. Van Deta.
Yeah.
Ms. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Little.
Yes.
Chairman Barco.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank God. Yeah. Do you have any questions to, here to reach out? Okay, next on our, our project, the site plan review application for ninety-one Hudson's Road, which is an amendment to the PDD. The Milton Town Board has accepted the request for an amendment to ninety-one Hudson's Road Senior Housing PDD, which we conceptually reviewed on October twenty-first. The applicant is seeking to amend the PDD legislation, local number five, passed October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, to increase the number of available garages and the units from fifty-two to seventy-one. That would create nineteen units that would have two car garages and need thirty-three units with single car garages. For our review this evening, we have the correspondence dating September tenth, twenty twenty, from Michael Tooney to the town board, draft legislation to amend the Hudson's Road Senior PDD, original site plan for the BDD dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, a site plan review application dated December second, twenty twenty, PDD amendment plan dated ten twenty-seven twenty, correspondence from our engineer, Joel Bianchi, to the town board dated November ninth, twenty twenty, minutes from the town board meeting on November twelfth, and a resolution fifty-eight, twenty twenty, for the town board affirming their lead agency status on the project and the affirmation of the negative declaration for the purposes of Seeger, the ceritoria county referral dated eleven twenty twenty, and the MJ engineering review received today, December sixteenth, twenty twenty. Who's gonna present? Go ahead, Joe.
Hey, uh, good evening, uh, Joe Danable with the Environmental Design Partnership. Okay, Joe Danable with the Environmental Design Partnership, here, here on behalf of Mountain Land Development Company, in their application, um, to amend the approved site plan to allow for nineteen of the approved units to have two car garages. This project's been in front of the town board recently at several meetings, it's also been in front of the planning board as a referral to the town board for the amendment to the legislation. I'd like to say, I think this should be about the easiest approval we could possibly go through, I think this is really an ministerial action. It's amending a site plan, there is no changes to the environmental impacts associated with this project, no additional trips generated, no additional flow of sewer, of water. As we were aware, many of these board members were present during the site plan review process for this project, it was a very lengthy pro, pro, process, significant scrutiny by the town, the town's engineers, the public as a whole. I'd like to say again, what we're looking at is, is relatively minor, it does not change any of the bedroom counts, again, does not increase traffic. We have a couple minor increases in impervious area, reviewed the letter provided by MJ Engineering. We can certainly provide documentation that there is a negligible effect on the stormwater management system that we could handle either by increasing the height of the overflow spillway by about five hundredths of a foot, or potentially putting in a pervious pavement toward a little bit of the area, or maybe even some small rain garden, but relatively minor and no change to the site plan as we're looking at it today. Additionally, we could provide, if needed, the updated grading plan to show we're not changing the limits of clearing and grading and disturbance associated with that plan. We're here tonight, we'd like to obtain a final approval on this project for the amended site plan so that we can then proceed to the building departments and, and obtain the necessary building permits for the amended site plan. Thank you.
Did the town approve the local armament? Will they have something to do that, right? Did the town board approve the local armament?
I think yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions, any information you got, Bill, or?
I just, I'd just like to say, in, in the opinion, going through the process, the applicant has done a tremendous job on site retention, and if you get a chance, take a look, go over to the site table, look around, he's done a tremendous job on their prep work for the buildings and stabilization, and the additional garages would be an asset for the traffic stage that site, it would be a, a place for cars to be parked off to queue and off the streets, possibly, to drive a more market, or so it's an asset to, to that area. And again, I've been monitoring the site and have, have included those for the excavation number.
Do the board have any questions, comments? So, Bianchi, do you have anything more to say, or your memo was pretty straightforward?
Yeah, no, I just, the stormer, that's, that's due in, the town board has been reharp here, um, plain water, um, by, 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 um, the town board, the document, so, um, um, by, um, part of the stormwater, um, and we've just, um, 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 or, or, that, have no, no, uh, uh, or, um, time for the plan.
Okay, uh, and as I mentioned earlier, the town board held its public hearing on this, there was no public comment, we did it on November twelfth, so I don't necessarily see us dragging this out for any additional public hearing. If the board's amenable to that, I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan amendment to the PDD at ninety-one Hudson's Road dated on the plan map of twelve, two twenty, with two conditions, those outlined on site plan things that the engineer would like, that I can provide an update on the grading plan, and then provide a letter of analysis in the game that the proposed stormwater management system can accommodate the site changes. So, it's on the third?
Mr. Chairman, I shall move.
Do I have a second?
Chair, I second that.
Any discussion?
Mr. Marcus Cowan.
Final discussion on it, or not, full board?
Mr. Marcus Cowan.
Yes.
Ms. Padula. Mr. Collins.
Yeah.
Ms. Van Deta.
Yeah.
Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Little.
Yes.
Chairman Barco.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak to us about the continued site plan review for four thirty-two thousand, uh? Okay, and that's me in here, and that. Oh, you got a hand? Okay, Dave Kelman raised his hand. Uh, let me unmute Dave. Dave, I just allowed you to talk? Yes. Okay.
I'm Dave Frankowski, and there was a need for, um, a, a site plan, or the change of tenant, and, uh, it's not a thing that I was submitted to you, that this site plan was made by us and submitted to you, and, um, basically I'm here to answer any questions. There's not, there's not even super proposed, but if you have any questions about the site layout, I can answer them.
Well, um, we had submitted to Dave Frankowski, when he was here, a detailed checklist of a modified, a modified checklist for site plan approval, uh, anything in eleven of twenty-four items that we wanted to get information on, um, to be presented in this plan, and the vast majority of those were not addressed in this plan. In particular, uh, anything regarding signage, uh, arrangement of parking egress, egress, provisions of vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle access, uh, any outdoor stores that was gonna go on, the lighting facilities that need to be provided, uh, the amount of building area proposed for office use or other commercial activities, they're all indicated, and this, this plan that I have, it says it. It's only titled change of tenant, office building, it wasn't titled a site plan, so it didn't have the items that we were looking for. So at this point, I think, uh, we would consider this still an incomplete application.
Uh, okay, if you, uh, I have the checklist in front of me, and, I mean, who is that? I guess, you know, I can see what those items are, but for the most part, nothing that's on site is actually changing. There, what's there is there. I mean, it is pretty much all shown on the site plan. The, you know, the parking layout, the sidewalk, the building, the entrances.
Well, I mean, I know the, the, the town's building inspector had significant concerns, let me take that mic so he can hear you, on the, particularly the lighting, uh, it's Dave, come on. I'll let, I'll let Bill Lewis speak, please.
Hi, Dave. When we did the original meeting, we had some issues with, uh, lighting, um, on-site.
I can't, I can't really hear you very well.
When we did the meeting, we had issues with, uh, we wanted to see how we addressed the lighting, the parking, the egress in and out of the, the facility. As John said, we gave you a list of the items, the big things were also the wastewater, uh, we didn't have a definite of wastewater, we provided, uh, sewage, are you paying sewage fees to Harrod Springs, or do you have an onsite collection septic? We've got letters from, from you in the original application, and it wasn't clear to us, and we asked for the clarification of that. We also, for stormwater management, obviously, we, we pulled back some of the items that were on the list, I don't have the list in, in my packet here, I can defer back to the planning board chair, and he can list the items out of the seventeen or eighteen that we had, we narrowed it down to eleven items, we were looking to address on the proposed and submitted site plan, and basically, uh, as we have this site plan that's marked office building, Geiser Road, change for tenant, we were looking to have those placed on here and addressed on the, uh, site plan map. Some of those items we don't see, so I'll go, I'll defer back to the planning board chair, and he can address the items that are on his list.
So, I mean, I think the things that we were looking at to see more detail was, um, provisions for the vehicle, pedestrian and bicycle access, it's a big thing, it's in the town center, this site was originally built and designed without that in consideration, so we wanted, know that that was addressed, knowing that it wouldn't be a lot changed, but is that, is that capable of being done? Any location of outdoor storage, the description and method of sewage disposal, location design of those materials, again, Bill, the original applications back in the eighties, I think were indicating that water was coming from Harrod Springs and sewer was gonna be dealt with.
But the sewer never got addressed, or the sewer was never pulled, so we don't know about that.
So, we, yeah, we don't know where, how that's being dealt, so we wanted to make sure both sewer and water, uh, were being dealt with. And then. So I see, I see that there's a well noted on the map, but where is the sewer being dealt with? Okay, so we just, we never dealt with in the original permits issue, we just wanted to have that documented and put on there, that you have an agreement for sewage disposal of Harrod Springs. Yep.
I understand the project is, is a major renovation going on in the, in the town center, the board was very clear at the last meeting, that we could get some pieces ordered back from here. The need to be a comparison to what the site is now, how far it needs to the town, town center standards, and any incremental improvements to be made, or, also there are some technical questions that while the map may show it, there is an expectation that a narrative should have been provided, described, questions that would apply to the board, for example, saying that the map shows the sewer out all the way, the letting, making the board make interpretation to the map, of, of one sentence, narrative on all these topics, Larry, would help the board to understand, um, that's the goal. Further, there's also major renovations on the building, though I feel, I don't know what type of renovation it is, those renovations may trigger exterior improvements that you are not proposing, as an example, do not conform to the D D standards, so for these that's a lot, not the, 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 on the level of underneath the building, so, that's in the narrative that accompanies the plan, that not only shows the plan, information what's described in the narrative to the planning board will go a long way to help the board evaluating the life expectancy of that one.
Is it not possible for me to explain? Any question that they have? I think they.
I, 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 that is not, that is not me, I'm in here, maybe, um, um, um.
I mean, the other, the other thing that we had asked is that there had been, there's a division of the building, there's a certain amount that was gonna be used immediately for office spaces, if I'm not mistaken, there's a hairdresser at least in some part of the building?
Two other businesses.
Two other businesses, so we wanted that broken down as to what were there, because when those businesses came in, they too should have been addressed via, via site plan, if there were any alterations to accommodate, and that was not done, uh, at the time that those buildings, those businesses had been more recent, in, in the last ten years, some of them maybe in the last few months, it's not hard to understand. So we were gonna try to make sure everything got all brought up to speed, the record was complete on this project, we go back to the nineteen eighties, we don't even have signed, um, final inspections and certificates of occupancy, that are here, I'm not saying that they weren't issued, we just don't have them in our record. So we were gonna try to get all this up to speed and to date, in compliance to whatever needed to be done, as the engineer points, as Joel pointed out, you know, there could be ADA compliance requirements, uh, we wanted to know what the egress and egress for the offices, in this case, the intention for them to be in town offices would be, and then there was concern about the lighting. And depending on what the uses are, we're not even sure if the, the parking's adequate to accommodate all of them. So that's, that's, that's the kind of information we were looking for, and as the engineer said, we're looking for a narrative that says, yep, you mean it. we mean it, these are requirements, this is how we're getting there. And I thought we were pretty clear back in September when we went through this, um, and then we didn't hear anything. Um, do you think you can get that by the next meeting on the 21st? I'm sorry, 20th?
What's the next meeting? 20th.
20th, 20th. So that would have to get to us two weeks, two weeks before that.
Yeah, that would be the 6th.
The 6th of January. Does the board, uh, how does the board feel about hearing or not hearing on this project? Well, we can schedule it, if he doesn't have any information, we just can open here. Oh, sorry, I'm using microphone. All right, so, um, I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing, if you think you can get the application here, Dave, uh, at 7:10 PM on January 20th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any more discussion? No discussion, poll the board?
Mr. Marcus Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Dula? Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Mr. Nata?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Will?
Yes.
Yes. All right, Dave, um, do you need a copy of this list, or do you have it, the checklist that we modified? I can email you a PDF. See if I can get you the PDF of it. Okay. Or anything else you need from us at this point? Okay, uh, any other business to be brought up for the plan, for the CD? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:12 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor, some of you probably saying, huh?
I oppose.
Nope, we're adjourned, thank you.